I should approve.
Second.
Second by norm, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Okay, moving right on. The next is our the creation of the Agriculture Advisory Board, so I'm assuming Jim is gonna make a presentation.
Uh, well, I can make a presentation.
Something short and sweet.
Short and sweet. Uh, the eggs and market project that has been, um, put forward started about a year and a half ago, two years ago with a committee that was established. Uh, the intent of the committee was first presented because of the fact of special use permits being applied to eggs used within the town of Grand Island. Seeing the town did not have, uh, really a true representation of the eggs and market, uh, folks that were doing farming on Grand Island. A lot of the approvals and submissions and discussions were all done by the Erie County Eggs and Market. Um, with that, it became very apparent that we needed home rule, uh, more on this issue, uh, than relying on somebody, uh, from another county to actually discuss how eggs and market will, farming will be done, uh, within the community of Grand Island. Uh, then we actually got a grant, uh, from the New York State Eggs and Market to actually develop a eggs and market, um, document for the town of Grand Island, a guideline, uh, for farming within the community of Grand Island. And that document would then had the ability to hire, uh, a planner to work with them. Uh, all that had been completed in December of last year. Uh, it was adopted, uh, uh, right at the last meeting of December, I believe. And then after that meeting, there was a discussion with Eggs and Market for Erie County. Uh, they asked us to actually add more content to the document for, uh, talking about why we're doing what we're doing and so forth, which we had done. Uh, the town board then approved and adopted those recommendations, uh, about about a month ago. So in doing so, the first form of action to be done on this document, it would be to establish a committee that actually would turn around and start to, uh, implement the eggs and market plan that's been adopted by the town of Grand Island. What is before you was a discussion about the members that would be on this committee and their responsibilities moving forward. In the early discussions, it was decided that maybe, uh, the planning board should have, uh, some, um, ex officiary, uh, duties within the committee, but wasn't necessary, but it was put forward as an idea. And I think that's what brought us to the conversation we're having tonight. We have, I believe we have changed that document up so they were not putting the burden on to the planning board and we're moving forward to actually establish the committee. The committee has been established by a guideline of representation of different farmers plus two members at large that would represent citizens at large, uh, or the citizens issues that would be adjacent to a farming activity. And that's myself and Jen Persatier. So tonight, the discussion really was, you know, giving the planning board more clarification, uh, to their liking as to what they feel the document is or their comment about it. I will say this, um, any action that's taking place by this board is a recommendation to the town board. Anything that's going to bring in discussion of zoning or any other types of issues, the planning board then would be given those documents by directly by the town board itself. In other words, the planning board, the eggs and market committee would turn around, make a recommendation to the town board. Town board then would turn around and set public hearings. They would then refer to the planning board for discussion and for the recommendation. So nothing's been on this committee is just like a, uh, transportation board or the planning board or, uh, recreation board. It's making recommendations, not making decisions. Uh, one of its goals though would be is to help, uh, rectify any issues facing, uh, farmers and residents on farming issues that they would then examine and see if they could find a resolution where the town could, uh, be make post parties happy. Again, to be making recommendations to the town board or to the town departments. And with that, I'll turn it over to Sheila. Sheila, if I missed anything.
I don't think you missed anything. That was a good summary.
Thank you.
Really, we're here to answer questions if anybody has questions.
Okay, uh, planning board members, anyone have any questions of Sheila or Jim Sharp?
Yes, I do. I mean, why do you feel it's necessary to have a representative from the Erie County Department of Environment and Planning?
Sheila?
Oh, I'm sorry. It's Erie County Farmland Planning. Um, they are the ones that are responsible for making the decisions and determining who is allowed into the ag district. And so they are very much involved in farming and agriculture across all of Western New York, Erie County. And they have been involved, um, throughout the two-year process of writing the plan. Um, we've gone to them for recommendations, understanding on how other communities and counties have dealt with things or townships have dealt with things. Um, and so they have, uh, they have offered advice along the way and in best ways of representing things and making decisions and determinations.
Well, you know, I think, I think in terms of, uh, call it ad hoc advice or whatever form of advice, that that's fine. But as I stated, it's in the minutes, uh, in terms of the board membership itself, I don't think it's at all appropriate to have a non-resident, uh, unless, well, no, just leave it as a non-resident be, uh, a member of the board in any form, whether it would be a voting member, an alternate member, or for that matter, an ex officio member.
They would be liaison. They are, they are a liaison. They are just a reference for us. They are not voting. They are not a member. They are just a liaison.
Well, it's, uh, the way this is stated, it says two liaison, non-voting members. So, uh, you know, there's a contradiction in terms here. If they're a liaison, you can call them a liaison, but not a member.
Okay. Point taken. Happy to strike the word member.
I think the same with, um, a member of the town board, a member of the town board is, uh, appointed as a liaison and is not a member per se of, of, of the board. Uh, the other is a member from code enforcement, again, as an ex officio representative. Uh, I think, uh, and again, I stated this and it's, so it's, I think it's in the minutes that code enforcement, I think, uh, should, uh, you know, by all rights be an arms-length type of, uh, situation, uh, because, you know, because of its very nature. I mean, they're there to enforce, uh, town laws and the zoning code, uh, and so forth. So I just think that, again, it, uh, we should not have a member of, uh, code enforcement in any shape or form on the board.
So I happen to agree with you. Um, that was at the request of the town board, I believe, in the last call that that was, um, inserted in there. And although I agree that they most definitely have, um, a better touch in terms of the issues that have come up, you know, over the many years with, um, the code that we have in place, I would agree with you that, um, you know, our meetings are public. They can always attend. They can always, um, provide input if they, if they choose to, but I tend to agree with you that it's not necessary.
Okay. The, the other thing, um, is under formation of advisory board, uh, membership and so forth, under A, uh, A1, if you will, the seven member, uh, I would reword it as possible or as follow, seven member positions and the two alternates, plural, alternates, shall be residents of the town and may include, but not be limited to persons who undertake agricultural activities of any size or scale in the town, eliminate the comma after town for commercial or hobby purposes, or those who provide support to persons undertaking such activities. And then eliminate, um, you know, the, the, the last sentence, I'm, I'm not sure whether, uh, you know, members recommend a chairperson or the town board designates a chairperson, really doesn't matter one way or another. I mean, I would eliminate that sentence, uh, but again, I, I wouldn't, um, you know, I, I wouldn't just restrict it to the agricultural, uh, community. I, I would eliminate that particular wording. So in other words, and two alternates should, should be residents of the town and may include. So in other words, uh, you could have, uh, people that are innately related to agriculture, but are willing to serve on the board and learn and, uh, you know, do what's necessary and, um, be, be part of the process. Uh, you know, I think it's a good, personally, anyway, I think it's a good check and balance.
That I completely agree with you, and I think it's worded. It may be the wording that is, um, confusing, but it does say, which may include, but will not be limited to persons who undertake agriculture. So maybe we just need to phrase that slightly.
Yeah, I think it just needs to be cleaned up, uh, a little. You know, the, the other thing is, is, um, and by the way, I've, I've read the resource guide and I had a copy of it.
Thank you.
It's obviously, it's a, it's a lengthy document. There's, there's a lot to it. Some of it, um, you know, reflects back on the comprehensive plan. Some of it reflects on the law as handed down at the state level and so on and so forth. But I think, um, and Tom DeGani, by the way, made a point that I think it was the last town board meeting, that, uh, the ag committee as it exists today, uh, which, you know, it'll become a board, but the board will have a different composition. So people that are on the committee today may or may not be part of that board, uh, but that's to be decided. And, uh, along with that, um, uh, I, I think we need maybe a deep dive, if you will, into the specific text and the contents of, uh, the resource guide because in, uh, the implementation section, which is the last several pages, I think, of the document itself, um, there's a matrix of activities and, uh, those activities and objectives, uh, have timelines to them, short-term, intermediate, long-term, and so on and so forth. And, um, you know, a lot of that has to do with policy going forward. A lot of it has to do with, I think, some pretty, pretty darn significant changes to the zoning code. And remember, we're, we're crafting something here that, uh, is going to have a life to it of many, many, many years, long after most of us on this call, you know, are long gone from this process. Other people are going to be in the middle of it and presumably, uh, that document or some variation thereof is going to have a, a much, much longer life to it. So I think we need to have some discussion along those lines. One of the things, by the way, that jumped out at me, there's a, a section of it called SWAT, which is basically a matrix called, uh, uh, I'm trying to remember what, uh, SWAT is all about, uh, opportunities and threats and so on and so forth. Uh, one of the threats that was, um, I can't remember whether it was a threat or, uh, or what it was referenced, um, uh, lack of confidence, or maybe it was mistrust. I can't remember how it was worded with regard to town government and code enforcement. I just think that, uh, that's, that's not a real good jumping off point, if you will, to document something like that, because anything you put in writing is memorialized and it implies in that case that, you know, town government does not and maybe has not understood, uh, or, or really paid attention to what they're doing or have done. And likewise with code enforcement. So I would be really, really careful, um, about things like that in a document, you know, that's going to have a life to it.
I'd actually, I'd like to respond to that if you don't mind. This was, this is something that we went, we went around and around and Pete can attest to it, as can Jim, um, about including in the document or not. And because we certainly did not want to create rubbing points that, you know, we didn't need to. However, that's kind of how this, um, this whole process began. And it's, I'm certainly not talking about the current town board or the past town board or anything along those lines. I'm talking about a, a general feel for, um, the friction. And there is, there is and has been in the past, a very true friction between, um, the farming community, people who want to farm their property and, um, the town government, whatever shape, you know, whatever person, whatever being that was at the time. And so we really did spend a lot of time thinking about whether or not that should be in there. And, um, the planner that we were working with said, you know, this is a point in time, right? This isn't something that's going to be the truth from now until forever. This is how we got here and this is what started it. And it's important to identify that those were one of the, the, um, things that we were going to try to get over, that we were going to try to improve on. So that's the reason that it's in there. It certainly wasn't meant, you know, as a sticking point for anybody. Um, it was, it was really just to ensure that, um, you know, it was, it was clear that there has been some friction and that that is something, that is one of our goals, is to eliminate that friction.
Tim, Tim, I know, I know Tim mentioned last meeting about, um, meeting on a regular basis.
Yeah, we typically meet monthly, um, through COVID and through this whole trying to, you know, it's been seven months now trying to get the advisory board document pushed through, so, um, and, and signed off on. So, um, we haven't met as frequently as we did, but we've always, up until COVID, we always met on a monthly basis.
Yeah, but I know, Tim, Tim, you, you mentioned something, some language about the meeting, because the, then this document, it says they're gonna meet as the chairman, you know, requires and at least three times a year.
Correct.
Yeah, I, I was just suggesting that they meet at least, they have a monthly schedule and a day of the week that they would meet. And then if they don't have anything to talk about, they could cancel, but.
Right.
Like that monthly schedule.
I, I, we like, like how ours is, like, um.
Yeah.
We do. The first Thursday, the first Thursday of every month is our scheduled meeting.
Yeah, I understand that, but that's not what's in the document. I think the document needs to reflect on what you're actually doing.
Okay.
And you should meet monthly, and I agree with you.
Yeah, we agree with that as well.
The other boards do, and if you have nothing going on that month, you don't, you don't meet.
Yeah, that is a lot to be done. So my feeling is the board is gonna meet monthly. Uh, just so for a point of interest to Bob, um, it also reflected in the document, uh, and I, I didn't catch the paragraph in the actual, the matrix you were talking to, but in the matrix, we also talk about better improving communications between, uh, the New Yorks or the Erie, the, yeah, the Erie County Eggs and Market Group, uh, which is also something that we need to do and that a meaning that the town of Grand Island should communicate, uh, a more regular basis with the eggs and market of Erie County so that we don't have conflicts when members are either trying to, uh, join the, the organization and ask permission to be within eggs and market of Erie County. That Grand Island would actually have a say in those applications moving forward. Therefore, we're asking for improving communications on all levels, not just at the town, but also with Erie County. So it's kind of spelling out that the committee should make a serious effort, a, a pointed effort to make sure it has good communications on all levels of government.
The, the other question we brought up last meeting was, uh, under the mission statement, where upon, and I understand the language has changed a little bit, but on, on request of the town board, attempt to minimize, mitigate, resolve conflicts.
Correct.
I just don't understand how an advisory board would get involved in that. Maybe they could give a recommendation to the town board, but not the way it's written. It sounds like they're gonna be at the table resolving this conflict. And I mean, you also have conflicts with other boards and other items in the town. And we don't have a board that can minimize, mitigate, and resolve conflicts. And that was brought up at last meeting as well.
Yeah, and, and again, um, and in part I brought it up, but I think it has to do, again, reflecting back on code enforcement, which it, the code enforcement obviously is, is to enforce. And, um, so, um, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm just not sure, uh, about the whole language about minimizing and mediating and resolving conflicts. I mean, if you have a farmer with cows that are drifting onto somebody else's property and the property owner is unhappy, uh, but farmer says, look, uh, you know, everything's under control. I mean, who's, you know, who's gonna resolve a neighborly dispute? And I don't think it's, uh, an advisory board. I think, you know, oftentimes these things are conflicts between two property owners, uh, and they have to resolve it themselves by, uh, you know, friendly means or litigation or however it's resolved, or take it to code enforcement and have them, uh, you know, adjudicate the thing or the ZBA or whatever have you. So I'm not sure the town board would even be requesting an advisory board to step in and mediate something.
Yeah, so.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Okay. Um, perhaps mediate needs to come out, uh, because I, I think that's the sticking word. The advising and, um, providing recommendations is actually part of the reason that this board is, is gonna be of value in the future. I will tell you why. Code enforcement, um, you know, other people in town government may not understand what is the best way to manage something, right? And, and I'm not talking about code at this point, or, or, you know, it's not written in the zoning laws that way. I'm talking about somebody has a concern, submits a complaint, um, and the, the town board or code enforcement doesn't really understand a way to be able to reduce the risk or, or resolve the issue. That's where having people who are experienced in this would be able to help. And I don't mean sit down and with the neighbors and have a conversation. I'm talking about providing advice on ways to be able to resolve a situation. And it, and it has happened in the past and we have been asked to provide input in the past.
All right, I'm, I'm gonna step in here, Sheila. Casey, can you hear, hear us, Casey?
Yep, I'm here.
All right. All right. What's your feeling on that? Shouldn't code enforcement be the, the one more involved than an advisory board on, to minimize, mitigate, and resolve conflicts?
Um, I'm not sure.
But let me give you an example. Then maybe Casey can answer. So you have a neighbor who's complaining because their next door neighbor has put up a beehive and they are allergic to bees and they are concerned that the beehive is going to, you know, shoot, shoot bees over to their yard, right? They're, they're concerned. They have a pool. They don't know what to do. So is there anything in the town code that says, you know, you can't have a beehive? I, I don't believe there is. And the question that came to us was, what do we do? What's the conversation that we can have to make sure everybody, this doesn't blow up into a neighbor issue? That this is able to be resolved, um, in a way that both of the neighbors are happy, right? And, and because we have people who are on our board who have, um, many beehives, they understand exactly how to mitigate risks to ensure that neighbors aren't going to be bothered by it. So I don't think code enforcement would have that answer, right? I wouldn't expect them to, certainly. Their job is to enforce the code. And I'm not suggesting that we would step in and enforce the code, or that we would step in and have a conversation with neighbors, but we can provide information that may make it easier to solve problems like that. That's just one example.
Yeah, you know, kind of taking off on that because I think it's a good example. So, uh, somebody's a beekeeper, you know, and, um, maybe they're not in an ag district and maybe they never intend to be in an ag district. But, you know, they like to keep bees. So it really is probably not going to qualify as a commercial operation, nor is it necessarily ever gonna qualify as a hobby operation, but they have, is there anything in the law or in the code as it exists that says, if I want to keep bees and create a hive in my yard, but I can't do it? Uh, and, and, you know, do I have to be X number of feet away from the nearest other residents and all those kinds of things that are inherent?
Well, that's, that's interesting you brought that up, Bob, because my next door neighbor has bees and he came over and said, are you concerned with the bees? And, and he brought up and said, well, there's nothing in the code that says he can't have a couple of beehives.
There, there is nothing that I'm aware of.
So, so if there's nothing that you're aware of, I, I don't understand why we're talking about the bees then.
It was a, it was gonna become a code enforcement issue. So that was exactly why, like just asking the questions. Bees was just an example. There's been examples with goats. There's been examples with chickens. There's been a lot of examples. That was just one I brought up that came to mind.
Let me offer a suggestion here, possibly changing the wording, that might, you know, uh, keep everybody happy here. And that would be upon request of the town board, offer input to minimize and resolve conflicts involving agriculture operations in the town.
Doesn't it say that? I'm sorry.
No, I mean, it says minimize, mediate. I'm saying.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's looking a line up of, you're right, you're right, you're right.
On request of the town, um, offer input to minimize and resolve conflicts. And that's doing exactly what you were just talking about.
Yeah. Yeah, and I, and I, and I think, um, you know, whatever the conflict is, you gotta be a little bit careful, um, who, who's engaged in that process, because certainly, uh, with a lot of these things, you know, the town, the town board does not want to get directly involved in neighbor-to-neighbor disputes. Okay? It's not their job. And, um, so, uh, well, you know, whether it's bees, whether it's goats, whether it's chickens, um, and by the way, there was a good example, uh, talking about chickens that came up just, uh, recently and was heard before the ZBA at their most recent meeting.
I heard.
Yeah. So, but, uh, you know, you can go and watch the live stream of that. The whole thing was kind of, um.
Also under powers and duties H, it says aid in resolving conflicts involving agricultural opera, operations.
At the request of the town board, we actually went through this with the town attorney and he was comfortable with the language because it very clearly says, at the request of the town board, aid in resolving conflicts. Aid is providing advice, providing education, whatever, right? It says at the request of town board aid.
Well, uh, you know, getting back to Norm's comment earlier, I think you used the word input. If you took aid and, you know, I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna get too nitpicky, but just for the sake of consistency.
I don't like the word aid either. Okay, anybody else have anything else they wanna bring up on this?
Well, I, I guess just, uh, a, a general question. I'll, I'll pose it to Sheila, Jim, uh, or anybody else that wants to comment. You know, there's, there's a chapter of the code, 145, farming, right to farm, uh, the intent and purpose, and then it goes on definitions and so on and so forth, three or four pages long. If you were to propose, um, modifications in some form or another to, to that, uh, going forward in the short term or, or whenever, uh, what would you propose?
One of the first things that we need to propose is actually aligning the state code, um, aligning our town code with the state right to farm law. We are missing a very key component, which is livestock. Livestock was stripped out of the town code and did not, um, and it is in the state code.
Okay, can you expand on that a little bit? Because obviously, you know, there's, there's, uh, livestock's a broad category, cows and goats and pigs. Okay, can you expand on that a little bit? Because obviously, you know, there's, there's uh, uh, livestock's a broad category, cows and goats and pigs and et cetera.
That's it, all of it.
Yeah, right, uh, and 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 much more, but um, you know, o- obviously, we have in our code. Um, requirements with respect to uh, distance from a neighboring residence. And, you know, those types of things and how the animals are kept and so forth. Uh, so what is it about uh, the current regs? Um, uh, you know, the the uh. The 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 measurements and and the other criteria that uh, that you don't like, or that you would change.
So it, that's a pretty complex question. I will try to give you a simple answer so we don't spend.
Sure, no, that's fine. Yeah, right, because there's a Bills game going on right now, by the way, so.
What's that?
Uh, no, I'm 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 playing with, there's a Bills game going on.
Everybody wants us to hurry up so they can go watch the Bills. Um, so, you know, uh, having the livestock portion not be in the town code. Um, the right to farm law, which gives, I don't know, there's, you know, A through. L or something, and we're missing one of them, which directly speaks to livestock. And having that not in there forces residents to have to go through a special use permit or a variance. Um, the variance then, or the special use permit, fall back on what I would consider to be overly restrictive. Requirements because they apply to everything. So you need two acres to have one chicken. You need two acres to have one horse. That just doesn't make any sense, right? There are. So Cornell um, has put out land management, uh, pretty much guidelines on appropriate land management. And how much livestock you could put into a specific area, because you're gonna have to have pasturing area. You have to have room for um, composting manure, right? There's a a lot of things that go into land management, pasture management. And so the rules need to be um, a little bit more uh, following what the guidelines are for proper. Agriculture and and pasture management versus just the this very generic. Two acres to have one, one livestock, whether it's a chicken or a duck or a a horse. That's just one of the things. I think there's a lot of, um, there's gonna be a lot of nuances to all of this, which is why that document is as big as it is. Um, the resource guide, because there was a lot of thought that went into how we can do this best. What we do not wanna do is, um, as one of my fellow farmers likes to say, burn hay bales. And um, you know, get everybody upset, right? We are residents. We are neighbors. We certainly don't want a cow peering into our kitchen window any more than you do. So there are, there has to be some clearly defined, um, changes. Um, but again, you know, we recommend them, right? We are not going to enforce them. We are not going to write the law. We, you know, we are not doing that, or so. We're working on, working with the right people to have those implemented and go in front of the right people. Does that help?
Yep. Thank you, Sheila.
Are chickens livestock or the?
Chickens are considered livestock in this, yeah, in in the right department, yeah.
Right. I I think that the one thing that I'd like to add here, it's really important, is right now, if we do not have a mechanism within the town of Grand Island. To deal with eggs used within the community, then you're resorting to dealing with the New York State Eggs and Market as well as Erie County. So therefore, you have an arm length that you're trying to resolve your local problem. This board basically will help resolve it locally before it even gets to the county or even gets to the state. Uh, because that's the only recourse that a farmer has if they're challenged and they and go for their defense. And right now, I think they were trying to, and we have been for the last two years, trying to work with the farmers without it going in to be a. Um, contested with Eggs and Market of New York State coming in to make a a rec- or making a recommendation or a. A finding on us. So I think it's very important that we have home rule here, that we have local people dealing with the local issues. And I think that's what's so important about this board. And the other one is that when people of Grand Island decide, or farmers of Grand Island decide to. Join the Eggs and Market of Erie County, again, the local board, our Grand Island Board, is going to review those. And work with the farmers to make sure they're even applicable and make recommendations, because they're gonna be, the county's gonna be looking for the recommendation from Grand Island. As to should they be in or not be in. And I think that's why it's so important this board be established. And one, I I, most important to me is local representation. And I mean, we are dealing with our own problems, not having somebody from the outside deal with our problems.
Okay, thanks, Jim. Now, board members, is this something that we want to have rewritten again? Or do we wanna try to make a motion tonight?
Before you say that, I'd like to make one point. That anything that is brought forward, especially you brought up the issue of the right to farm law. Um, that this board will make recommendations forward as to uh, uh, what it'd like to see happen. And that is for being more in concert with the New York State Eggs and Market. But that decision, uh, before it's made by the town board, will go to the planning board for discussion. Because again, it's changing code, and anytime you're changing the code, the planning board is given the front seat on addressing it. So there's no circumventing here by this board or passing any or uh, ordinances or codes. That are gonna be modified without your participation going forward. And I believe that this board would be brought in and make testimony to you all on why they did what they're doing, or why they're doing what they're doing. But that is part of the process we're gonna learn to do as we go forward. So that's just my point I wanna make.
Thanks, Jim.
Dave, what then now, what I'll do is I'll make a motion to um, to pass this agriculture advisory board. With the input, with the suggested input that we gave this evening.
I second that.
Jeremy, second. Any further discussion?
Well, I I think this evening, you know, we we can include the input that we uh, specified at the last meeting as well. Uh, just, you know, just to um. Uh, in in include anything that uh, that may not have been discussed tonight.
Is that all right to add that to your motion, Norm?
Well, I think what we, I think what we um, discussed last meeting, many of those items were already. Uh, incorporated. I mean, maybe not to a hundred percent resolution of like we like to see, but those were incorporated. So, I mean, they're not taking out, you know, the conflict resolution. They're rewording it now. To make it more amenable to us.
Right.
I would, I'd like to stick with my current motion.
Okay, uh, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Bob, Bob, did you vote?
I did, I said aye.
Okay, I'm sorry, didn't see you. Okay, so we're all set and and we wish us luck.
Thank you so much. Thanks for your time.
We truly appreciate it. We look forward to working with you.
Okay, moving on to communications received and filed. And then now we're to unfinished business, uh, the Grand Island Apartments. I noticed that we have a new drawing. Before I open for discussion, I just wanna check with Bob Westfall about the topo, cuz that was the.
Yep, and I'll, I'll.
Meeting.
Yep, I I, can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, so I I did meet with with Richard, um, had a discussion, he and Ron and myself met. Um, I'm trying to remember if Casey was there or not, and I apologize if I I don't recall. Um, but we went over some of the logistics. I feel the, the document that he revised and gave me has given me the information I requested. Um, so I, you know, we understand the drainage, we understand the changes to the site to not negatively impact other properties. Uh, with what they're proposing to do. So from the engineering side, we are comfortable what he, with what he's submitted.
Okay, thank you, Bob. Casey, are you there? Can you hear me, Casey?
Yep, I'm here.
Okay, when we talked about this last time, there was some question on parking in the front yards, in the front setback.
Correct.
How are your, how's your department with that issue?
Um, I mean, we're okay with the comments you had last time. They moved your, the parking that you requested and added landscaping in its place. I mean, I have an issue with that.
Okay, and uh, how about the parking, the amount of parking?
That was.
They're showing fifty-eight spaces and we have twenty-six units. We, you know, if you have a couple of cars per unit, that's fifty-two, and then we're gonna need visitor parking. Possibly some employee parking, um, repairman parking. Are we? Good with just the fifty-eight parking spaces? Plus, that includes handicap parking?
Yeah, I mean, that's uh, that's up for you guys to decide, but that that appears adequate.
Okay, and how about snow removal? Where uh, the the fellow that's representing them, how about snow removal? What do you plan on doing with your snow? I mean, it doesn't look like you have any more area left.
There's a large area, a large grass area in the back that we can, we can pile snow.
Okay, and. My other question to you is the dumpster in the front along Grand Island Boulevard. I I would suggest that that gets shoved way into the back parking area somewhere instead of right off to. I mean, it's right along the boulevard.
So the thought process on the dumpster in that location, uh, if we put it towards the back. I understand uh, that it would, it would look a little bit nicer to be out of sight, but it it causes, it poses a danger to everybody. That would be going to their units in the back there. Uh, if a dump truck would have to drive, or a garbage truck would have to drive all the way to the end and then reverse all the way back. Um, plus, it it really deteriorates the roadways, um, when when garbage trucks are going on the roads all the way back there. So what we did was we put a tree in front of it. We put a a wooden fence, and we also put ad agencies all the way around it to kind of screen. That dumpster location.
Any other members, any other comments?
Well, uh, yeah, um, you know, e- even though there's uh, maybe a perceived danger or potential danger. With with a a truck backing up, again, uh, we've not allowed um, dumpsters. Uh, in in the front setback in the past, and I don't think we should set a precedent here. So I think that thing should be shoved back uh, as far as it possibly can.
Any other, any other comments from any other board members?
Yeah, um, is there enough room in the rear of the property to put as some sort of turnaround? For a a dump truck to come in, a garbage truck to come in and remove the garbage safely?
We were trying to, there's no way for him to go uh, around the building because there's a large creek back there. Um, but, you know, like, the plan was to just have, that's why we tried to keep it towards the front of the building. That's also the uh, the maintenance crew uh, for the building will also be collecting the garbage from all the tenants and then taking it out to the front. Um, to dispose of it all, so they're trying to keep it in a, in a, in an orderly location.
I mean, can't you do some type of three-point turn in the back without bothering that creek?
We're also trying to to kind of utilize the existing pavement area that we already have. Um, and not really expand past then.
I I I understand your position, but again, I have to agree with Bob. Putting the dumpster in the front yard setback is a little odd.
Well, not not only a little odd, but again, I I I don't think it should be allowed. I don't wanna uh, set a big precedent. And if you have to, uh, you know, within the confines of the existing parking or pavement, create some kind of three-point uh. Turnaround, then so be it. Do what you gotta do.
Any other comments? Tim, Sandy, Norm, Jeremy?
Um, I have one more. Um, the, I see that you guys added a, another handicap spot in the rear of the property. Um, I'm not necessarily familiar with. Uh, whether or not the location of that should be with the others or or uh, in the front of the property as well. Is that compliant with ADA? Is it just more of a spacing or access uh, in and out of the vehicle for handicap occupants?
So the reason we put that at the rear of the property is there is an existing space, um, or that, or existing single-story portion of the building back there. And that is gonna be an accessible unit. Um, so that'll be the, uh, it's a brand-new unit that we're gonna put in there, and that will be an accessible unit. So we're trying to keep that handicap spot as close to that accessible unit as possible. We we would gladly put it in the front if you guys wanted that, but it just seems to make more sense to put it next to the handicap unit.
Well, as long as there's not a uh, there's some type of violation for that, you know, to happen, then. I don't see any issue with it. It's just more of uh, understanding the location for it, so, I I mean, I think it's. I don't have an issue with it. If you have an addition back there, then that's fine.
But but again, can't that? I I'm sure you're gonna have some type of assigned parking. So can't your accessible unit have the parking space right next to that? It looks like I, right next to that unit and maybe where that handicap parking is. Is that could be some type of the dumpster location?
I I think I could probably talk the uh, the developers into putting it at the end of the road, just leaving the pavement the way it is. And have that dumpster right at the end of that road.
Anyone else have any other questions? Motion, motion, anyone?
Uh, I motion, uh, you know, outside of moving the dumpster to the back and maybe. Uh, creating a three-point turnaround. Uh, if they're able to do that, I I motion to approve it.
I I would second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? No one. So that carried. You're all set, sir. Just have to straighten out, move in that dumpster, and you're good to go.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, should we make a motion to a adjourn and then do our tutorials real quick? Cuz I know everyone wants to get to the Bills game here.
Yeah, I mean, I guess. Yeah, I'll I'll make a motion. Or did you make a motion, Dave?
No, no, I'm asking if anyone, okay, Bob made a motion, a second. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so let's uh, go off of live streaming, Pete.